...a surgical procedure today on her mouth, oral surgery, and it was more invasive than she thought, so she's having a really hard time today, so she will not be joining us, so we'll go ahead and get started. So she will join me in a moment of silent meditation.
Will play routine and justice for all.
Do we take the role?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Perkins?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here. Right, I think council received minutes from the October 27 meeting. Any comments or questions on those?
Motion to remove minutes for October 27.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
One thing that's not on the agenda would be the approval of the work session minutes. You want to, you don't have any more feedback on those? Are we okay with those? We can keep those tonight here. Saw there was one thing maybe you could answer for correction.
Did she change?
Exactly. Okay. Any other comments about the work session?
I'll make a momentary agreement, so then that's...
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Current expenses? Any questions on those? Any clarification on it?
Question on the American Sun Craft Construction. Who is that?
Water Tower.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a momentary agreement, so then that's... Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. We will move into the reports now. Renee, you have anything?
I have a couple things. We received an $8,600 refund from workers' comp. So it's split between the two departments, well actually, the two department heads, I should say, between Kevin's department and Chief Phil's department. They advised that it should be spent on safety, I believe, so it's up to them how it should be spent. And then we also received an A1 rating from our bond company, which was better than anticipated. We were originally slated to possibly receive an A3 rating, but after reviewing everything, we received an A1 rating, so, which is very good, which determines the rate that we could possibly receive when they sell our bonds.
I have a question. Was the refund from workers' comp because of their overbilling?
No.
Okay. So that wasn't related to the overbilling, like private industry?
No.
Okay.
What did they look at to give us the A1 rating? Did it look part of the whole operation?
Looked the whole operation. They looked at, actually, the reasons why they gave us such a high rating was our general fund reserve.
Yes.
And our low debt and things like that, so...
Okay, good. Anyone want to see that paperwork or pass or act? It looks like it's from...
Moody's.
Okay.
Got to see it.
Okay. Great, thanks. That's really good. Chief?
Just got a few items to report on tonight. Police Department's going to be participating with the West Jefferson Post of the Highway Patrol and a holiday safety initiative. So far this year in Madison County, there's been nine fatality crashes, motor vehicle crashes, compared to four of all 2013. So for this holiday season, we're going to be placing more emphasis and focus on seat belts. Like I had stated, seven out of the nine drivers were not seat-belted in, and also seven out of the nine crashes involved alcohol or drugs. So we're going to be placing emphasis into that area with the West Jefferson Highway Patrol. You might have read the article this week, the release with the Madison Press regarding that. Sergeant McKee attended a public records training and public records release updated seminar put on by the Ohio Association's Chiefs of Police. And I attended the Union County Advisory Board meeting. The emphasis this month is being placed on what we've been working on for a while. You've probably heard me talk about switching our radio platform over to the 7X. This is going to be achieved in early 2015. We just applied for two additional radios on a JAG grant through the Ohio Criminal Justice Services. So hopefully, we'll receive that grant, and then we will be completely on board with all of our mobiles and portables ready for this switch over in 2015. We were able to successfully obtain all of our radios through the grants in the last BWC reimbursement, if you remember that, is what I used to purchase portable radios. I attended a drug-free safety plan meeting. This was in Marysville. This is on top of what Renee had mentioned about reimbursements. It's for the village to receive additional reimbursements through the BWC. We were a member of the Drug-Free Safety Workplace originally, and they stopped that program with the reimbursements. Now they've reintroduced a new one called Safety Plan Workplace. So I was actually on a conference call today with Renee and Kevin, and working on policy development for the new policy that we're looking to have in place by March. Once this is, the draft is completed, they'll forward a copy to Paul for his review, and then we'll start training the employees and hopefully have that in place by March, so... And again, that'll give us additional discounts towards our BWC, so that's all I had to report.
Any questions for Chief or... George Minister?
I have a couple of things. Since Mayor's not here, I'll touch on, her and I met with Frontier Communications and David Cal from Madison County CIC and Mr. Rucker from UPCO. Frontier is rolling out a downtown growth and revitalization grant. We are working with UPCO to apply for that grant. It has to be applied for through a nonprofit agency. So we're hoping they'll take the lead on that. I believe Mr. Rucker's going to discuss it with his board in a couple of days. But we met with the Representative Tom Travis from Frontier and kind of got laid out how we're going to go about getting this done. It was a great meeting, and we look forward to applying for that. I also attended the ODOT dedication and open house at their new West Jefferson Post. It's out on 70 and 29. If you haven't seen it, it's their new facility. They're moving from Route 42, just outside of London, and they're West Jeff, combining those two, and it's a really state-of-the-art facility, really nice place. Internally here, we continue to do leaf pickup, leaf removal, and we're also winterizing the park right now and readying all of our snow and ice equipment and getting it in service. And I could touch on CIC if you want me to right now. I attended both Madison and Union County CIC meetings over the last two weeks. Both organizations discussed their 2015 budgets. We approved the Union County budget, and Madison County will be approving November, the November meeting, which is November 25, I believe. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions?
Any questions? Mr. Wong? I have nothing for President Pro Kim. Ms. Wilson?
The only thing I have, I just like to discuss with Mr. Cordell today, received a public records request from Mr. Cordell regarding a Facebook page titled Budget Challenge. My understanding is that there are members of council that are on, or members of that particular Facebook page. What capacity, I don't know, and I don't know, I have any details about it. We discussed, basically, Mr. Cordell and I discussed the fact that I don't believe that it is a public record within the meeting of sunshine laws. It's not something that we have any custody or control over as a village or council. That being said, and also doing some research on it, I haven't seen anything that would suggest that such a Facebook page would be a public record just because a couple council members are on it. That being said, rather than Mr. Cordell potentially through his paper initiating a litigation as far as the ad hoc action to determine and ultimately have the court decide that issue, we've agreed to avoid that, and I could submit this as a request to the Attorney General's office to opinion section, just for an opinion on it. I doubt highly that they're going to disagree with my position that I've taken on this, but certainly if Mr. Cordell wants to have that resolution or have it that way, then we can do it that way and have the Attorney General offer an opinion on it. And I guess the only suggestion that I would say in the interim is if whoever administers the page, again, if you guys are, I don't, again, Leslie, if you or whomever administers that page, I would recommend, and again, I have no control because I don't believe it's a public record, but I can only recommend that while this is pending, an opinion from the Attorney General's office, don't alter, delete, or change anything because that could potentially be a spoliation issue. But again, I'm only throwing that recommendation out there, not as I believe that frankly it's not an issue that this council or the village has any control over, so...
What's the request exactly?
The request is that he, let me see, he has requested access, and formally requesting access to the website that he, so that he may view the proceedings. And he would request also an opportunity to fully and accurately read the historical posts of that group.
Is this the first time in this meeting? There's no case law on social media?
Not on this particular issue. Basically, and I didn't bring the whole analysis with me, but there's really a three-step analysis for determining whether or not something is a public record. And the first two elements of it, I think it could meet. The third element it doesn't meet because it does not, essentially, a document that is used to document the proceedings of this body, of this council, or of the village. It's not something that we maintain a records retention schedule on. It is not a public record in the sense that we have any control over it. While there may or may not be council members that participate in that forum, I don't believe that it's a village forum, so I'll just put that in mind and knowing that this area of law is changing, you know, rather than pushing the issue to court and having a public controversy over it and discussing with Mr. Cordell, it seems the most reasonable thing is that I can submit it as a request to the AG's office to offer an opinion on it. And as, we are a client to the AG's office in the opinion section for the purposes of that, so it shouldn't be any cost or anything like that. And it may take a while, they don't always get back very quickly. So that's all I have.
Any questions about that or anything related to that? Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning, anything?
We meet next week.
BZA?
Nothing going on with BZA right now.
Kevin, you're at the CIC. Park will meet this Wednesday, the 12th, at 6:30 here, and we're going to begin developing a park master plan and kind of hashing out some of the priorities and what we can do with the limited resources we do have, but that's this Wednesday at 6:30 here in this room. Personnel and finance?
Nothing.
Mr. Moore fired? Mr. Rucker, anything with UPCO?
Next meeting is next Thursday, November 20th, 7 o'clock in the library. Everyone's welcome to attend.
Have we heard back from the next group earlier?
I actually called Mr. Conley today to confirm the appointment tonight, and I didn't get to speak with him, but spoke to his secretary. Sounded like something had come up. I didn't get a chance to talk to him. Obviously, he's not here, so I don't know what has come up. So I will contact him, obviously, this week and arrange that he's here at our following meeting.
Sounds great. May be probably better knowing if the mayor's here. All right, well, we'll move into old business. The third reading of 1614, Copperfield, Page 1 and 2.
Motion to approve third reading of 1614.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Sting.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Third reading of 1714, which is the refund of engineering fees.
Motion to approve third reading of 1714.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay, second reading of the 2015 budget. Hashed us out pretty good at the work session, so... Any questions or any thoughts on this?
I just want to put it on the record, y'all know my thoughts, which is, you know, we are trying to obtain financial consulting, expert advice on where to go as an entity in the future, both now and years, you know, after that. It's my opinion that this should be postponed, but that said...
And this has not changed, so there's no funds or anything for all the financial advice or anything. I know we don't know the cost yet, so...
All right, I entertain a motion or...
Motion to approve the second reading of 1814.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. Before we move into the new business, we have, they've arrived...
I believe that's Mr. Conley.
Okay, well, let him catch his breath for a second. Also, I wanted to address council briefly tonight. Eric, did you say something that's slightly a bit fine before we get into some of the other things that might drag on?
Well, I was just coming to see if any progress had been made with Frontier regarding the wires. If I'm scheduling for painting in the spring, I have to have the wires more than six inches away from my building.
I spoke again with Mr. Travis. He was going to speak to the technician that was out at your building the day after the last time I spoke with him. He's not sure what's going on or if it can be. He had said maybe putting a mast to get it away from your building, so that's where we're at, waiting to hear back from him. This was just yesterday or the day before that I met with him.
Okay, good. Robert Chandler has refused on at least five occasions to meet me out there and look at it, so that's why I'm here. I'm wanting, obviously, something has to be done. I guess just try to keep me in the loop.
Is this the same Frontier Communication?
Well, how about we move in with, okay, we just do that now before the...
Let me clear that up. Mr. Conley is from Rock Mill, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I had the two confused, so...
Okay.
So we were actually just talking about it a minute ago, so...
Yes, if you would like to take some time now to kind of address us and maybe tell us what you, what you and Mr. Kennedy have spoken about, and let us know what you can do for us.
Good evening, thank you for having me in. My son is shadowing these people this evening, so he'll get to see your council meeting in action, and I told him that we would meet in this grand hall with fancy accommodations. All right, so I struck out on that one. Thank you very much for having me in. My name's David Conley, and I am the owner and president of Rock Mill Financial Consulting. My company is a specialist in governmental financial consulting services, so we assist governments in matters related to money. So virtually any financial matter that a government can come up with. I have 26 years in the finance business. I worked for years out of Cincinnati with a company called Season Good. Season Good was what was at the time known as an investment bank that specialized solely in governmental finance. And then years later, I retired and started my own company to provide unique counseling to my governmental clients. I have about 400 government clients in the state of Ohio. They range from townships to villages, cities, school districts, counties, and from time to time even state agencies. So the first page is a page that sort of outlines what our company does. We provide scope of services around any number of things, from how you approach investing money to doing research and analysis, which is primarily what I spoke to Mr. Kennedy about. And then we can provide a guidance from an economic development perspective, communications. And when I see communications, it's in the area of helping your community understand your financial circumstances better. So we find that governments are usually pretty good at operating, but not so good at communicating. And so we help our clients take what they know from a financial perspective and explain that more clearly to the community, so that the community can have a finer appreciation for the challenges that you have as a municipal member. We help in that regard as well. We also provide advice and counseling when it comes to creating budgets and creating long-term forecasts, and that process is fairly simple. We provide some research and analysis to help support revenue projections your financial officer will put together. And on occasion, our finance officer clients will call us and say, "Does this look right?" You know, it's helpful to have another set of eyes to look at it and do those kinds of things. We also provide background to help finance officers know when something, either good or bad, is coming from a financial perspective, so that they're not surprised by changes and information. So all of that falls under our research and analysis. What we primarily do is we help our clients operate better. We help them research and understand comparisons between how they might operate in other communities. So, you know, for example, you have a public swimming pool that is, haven't seen it yet, but I understand it's very nice. As you get down the road, you'll be spending money to operate that facility, and you're going to say to yourself, "Should we be spending this much money to operate this facility? What do other communities spend to operate this facility?" And so we provide you kind of the information that allows you to provide a comparison as to whether or not you're spending, you know, the right amount, should you be spending more, should you be spending less, should you be increasing rates? You know, all those kinds of things that will help you create kind of a structure for how you operate the village in the future. And I tell people that we're only limited by your imagination, so whatever you can have a question about, we can find out the answers for it, so we specialize in. I want to put together, you have a quick summary on the first two pages, and I always like to provide some samples of work that we do, so you can see how we go about our work. And Mr. Kennedy and I spoke about looking at the budget, looking at how funds are allocated, creating benchmarks, and you guys have heard of the phrase benchmarking, where, you know, you kind of compare yourself to other folks. We can do that. I can pull information on any number of governments across the state and then establish for you some benchmarks. But on the page that starts with the green and gold, where you have the two pie charts at the bottom, we take our time to help you first assess what's happening within your own tax base. So the page that shows the nice colors on here is a breakdown of your tax base. In this kind of link, I think you probably have seen something like this in one form or another. This is a pretty common tool that the finance officers use. We work with your finance officer to build this model. By the way, everything you're looking at is in Excel spreadsheet. It's massive, and we give that to your finance officer, so that we can work collectively to solve some questions. But we begin to sort of assess what's happening in your tax base, and the reason that we do is that you receive income from that tax base. That tax base becomes kind of the basis for where you're going in the future. You don't receive a great deal of money in property taxes today, but it doesn't mean that at some point in the future, it couldn't be more of a contributor to the operations of the village. So we look at this, we try to figure out if there are any patterns or trends that we should be concerned about. Agriculture, you'll notice that I've highlighted a couple of numbers down there. At one point, if you look at 2003, your agricultural values were 375,000, and then they went up to about $1,507,000 in 2011. That's a pretty significant increase for those that do farm still in their property values, which can send kind of a negative sentiment to some of your local taxpayers if they happen to be farmers and have that much of an increase in their property values. But you see, it did come down a little bit in the last two years, and it's settling out. We know going forward, those values are going to go up again because the state has a goal to try to increase the ag values overall. Residential, you've grown pretty rapidly from $9 million back in 1991. It got as high as 60.2 million. You see a bit of a settling in the property tax category for residential homes as well. That's not uncommon. In fact, it's actually pretty good, because it's been, around the state, those declines have been even more substantial. So this is not too bad for you guys, and I would suspect that going forward, you're going to probably start to grow again, get some value in there. Your commercial values have done pretty well, and they're holding their own. Not a great deal of industrial to worry about, and then your utility personals have been fairly flat. The thing that's interesting, you see between 2009 and 2014, kind of a gradual increase in your utility personal numbers. We think that might go up a little higher. I don't know if there's any pipeline activity that has happened in or around this area. As you guys know, the fracking that's going on up in the northeast Ohio corridor has created the construction of a number of pipelines around the state. If you did have a pipeline that came through the area, it would show up in this category. So one of the things that we measure is whether or not that's likely for the future, which if it is, could increase your revenue, but right now, we don't see anything significant. The key here is that your property tax base has been pretty flat, you know, and your income that comes from that's been pretty flat. We don't see anything significant on the horizon that would tell us that that number's going to go up, not unless there's an abatement that I couldn't find that's out there, but we looked around, didn't see any big abatements. So we don't think that you're going to be getting a windfall from any property taxes anytime, so why is that important? Because you have to budget down the road, right? And if I can tell you that you're going to pick up another 50 grand from property taxes, that's great news, and you can budget for that. Well, I'm here to tell you you're going to pick up another $0 in property taxes down the road, so you won't be budgeting to spend any money from property taxes for some time to come. The other form of tax that you receive is income taxes. Second page is a snapshot of the school district that you guys are a part of, Jonathan Alder School District. This estate is not compiled from a village perspective. It's only compiled from a school district perspective. But what's helpful is that it does give us an idea of kind of what's going on in the area. Jonathan Alder has, since 1994, that second column shows the number of tax returns that have been filed for people that are residents of the school district. And there were 3,696 school districts, or tax returns in 1994. That number grew to 2012. And as you know, I mean, this region has grown pretty well over the years. The recession came along in 2008 and 2009, and you'll see some negative numbers there. That's pretty common during the recession. People tend to move to find work somewhere else. And then the growth rate moved back. You see 1.18, 2.95, 1.25 percent. So the growth rate started to come back a little bit, but it still hasn't jumped back to where it was before the recession. So our growth from a tax return perspective isn't as great. The number of exemptions, that gives us an idea of how many people are in each household. So from the school district's perspective, there's about 11,300 people. And then exemptions per return give us an idea of the, sort of the number of kids, if you will, in the household, which is important, because a community that has kids tends to continue to grow and expand, and as it does, produces income through, you know, income taxes and property taxes. What you don't want to have is what we call contraction, where even though you might be getting new taxpayers coming in, those taxpayers either don't make as much money or they don't have as many people in the household, and that can, that can have a long-term impact on your financial operations. So we look at that to really figure out, your number one revenue source is what? Income tax. We want to see, hey, wait a minute, are we at risk here? Is there something happening from a supporting perspective on our income tax? Are we... So we look at that to really figure out your number one revenue source is what? Income tax. We want to see, hey, wait a minute, are we at risk here? Is there something happening from a supporting perspective on our income tax? Are we starting to contract, if you will? We know we've got children. We know that our tax income is growing and it's growing actually pretty significantly. If you look at the next column that says percentage change, following the recession, you see the negative four point eight three percent. All of a sudden, you hit a five percent number, three point three eight percent number and a nine point two two percent number. Those are pretty big numbers and they're substantially greater than the number of taxpayers. You know, because you can grow two ways. You can grow from the number of people that pay taxes and you can grow from the amount of money that the people that are coming here make. Well, you've had a little bit of growth in the number of people, but you had a heck of a lot of growth in the amount of money that the people that are here are making, which is a huge positive. And if I had to guess, Ms. Van Winkle, your income tax revenues probably did a pretty good increase over the last fifteen years, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Question becomes, how reliable is that for the future? You know, is it a sustainable, is it a sustainable number? And if it's sustainable, that's good because you can budget for it. If it isn't sustainable, then what? And so part of what we do is help you all decide and get your hands around whether or not she should be budgeting for one percent growth or three percent growth on an income tax basis, you know, and something that would be mutually reasonable. Because why is that important? It's important because your expenditures, on the flip side of the equation, are growing at a rate that might exceed the rate that your revenues are growing. And I say might exceed because if you look at it in a vacuum right now, they do exceed your rate of revenue growth. So part of our job is to figure out, okay, is that rate of growth something that's irreversible? Can you, sort of the Titanic, you know, the big cruise ship at sea that, you know, you could stop it, but it keeps moving, turn the engines off? Or is it something else? But this gives us a basis for understanding what's going on. Now, I will share with you that far right-hand column shows the ranking of wealth of this particular community. This is based on the six hundred and fourteen school districts in the state of Ohio. Back in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, this school district was ranked two hundred and twenty-second, two hundred and twenty-fifth wealthiest out of the state. That number has improved to a hundred, roughly averaging around a hundred. So this region is considered the hundredth wealthiest from an income revenue perspective in the entire state of Ohio. So you're in the top twentieth percentile. So it's, and becoming wealthier. That's a positive from a tax perspective. So we take all of that into consideration. We also take a look at what's the likelihood, you know, how much money can be generated down the road. The next table is a, takes a snapshot, yep, a snapshot of your income tax collections as they come in. Five percent, five point seven percent overall average is better than the state norm, but still you've got some growth concerns that are happening within it. The other thing that we try to do with our clients is help you measure what exposures you might have for infrastructure needs, things of that nature, based on what's been invested historically in your infrastructure. Because you might find that you have to spend additional monies for things that you didn't think you would have to spend money for. And if that's the case, even though you're experiencing a five percent growth rate in your income tax, it may not be sufficient to get, to get you to where you need to go. So we use this along with projected, projections to look at long-term budgets. And we marry those long-term budgets with your capital needs. So if you have a capital plan, I don't know if you guys have a five-year capital plan developed or not. You're working on it? Well, I suggest, I recommend highly. If you are looking at, you know, because you are, you're in a period where you're, you know, your expenditures are moving along at a pretty decent clip. Having a pretty, I won't say detailed, but a good reliable capital plan is nice, especially, it doesn't have to be five years, even if it's three years. It gets you a better feel for where you need to be, you know, a couple of years from now so you can put together a decent budget. But we marry that with an income table and we try to see where we might be. The next page is something else that we use to try to help support some revenue protection. And as you know, typically, people, were you missing that page?
Yes.
Ah, yeah.
That's okay.
I remember.
I don't need it.
The, that's the, the income tax page and, or the unemployment rate table. Income taxes come from people that are employed. And the better the employment that you have, is yours missing?
Yeah.
It's well.
I apologize.
It's all right. Awesome. There's a point. I do this on purpose. It's how I keep people awake. You'll notice that the ring of unemployment right now is at the lowest point that it has been since the recession. It's a very, very attractive place to be. It also gives us the ability to measure income tax productivity based on employment. So we use this data to help us, you know, kind of take a look at where are we going from an income perspective based on employment rates. So we can do some pretty good projections based on, based on that information. Why is that important? Let's go to the last page. Hopefully you guys have the last page on your screen. The last page is a summary of your election history. And it's not a very long election history. The very first line shows that you all passed the bond issue in 2011. And that was for the swimming pool, I believe. And the swimming pool was approved by a whopping sixty-three percent, which you don't see too often, especially 2011 was still pretty much in the recession and they had the community support. The swimming pool then was, was pretty good. But we go to November of 2013 and the income tax request to maintain the police department went down. It was a fairly close race, but it still went down. And it was on prior to that in November of 2012 for a half percent. Actually, it was in municipal operations. I assume the police was a part of that levy at the same time?
Right. It was a dual levy. And we have, we have one already on the books if you aren't aware of that.
Yeah. I, so I, I saw that you got some money coming in for police.
Five and a half mils.
Five and a half, yeah. And then the, the rest is being supported from the federal fund. So I took a look at that. The reason that all this other stuff is important is that in the absence of the ability of passing a levy, we have to look at what revenues might be available to the, to the village otherwise. So that's one of the services that we provide. We, we try to figure out what other options might be available to you if the decision is to continue to spend the way that you spend. Or does it make more sense to attempt to let another levy in the future? But the election history, you know, points out to me one clear thing and that is I wouldn't put anything else on in November. I mean, just November doesn't seem to do, you know, produce very good results for you. You know, or at least an income taxes that seem to be pretty well received. And there could be some real math behind that as well because wealthier communities have more difficulty passing income taxes. And property taxes tend to do a little better. But we provide those statistics. Your census data down below shows the demographics in the community and what's happening overall. There's been a lot of growth here, almost a fifty percent increase in a decade. And, you know, the, the growth is happening, you know, by the way, it's a very young community. People have kids at home and school taxes and things of that weigh heavily on them. It's more difficult to get people to feel comfortable paying taxes. However, all in all, it's still a very impressive set of data for what supports the operations of the, of the village. So our, our job is to work with you in using data like this to do a number of things. The first is to help you assess, for example, your spending, how much you're spending for your various expenses for running the, running the village. Then if, you know, we can say to you, we've looked at the expenses, everything that you spend for is in line or is common to a community the size of this community, we can help the finance officer project at which point do you start to run out of money? Because it's, you know, it's inevitable without a new tax source or without some deductions in spending, if you will, you know, that'll happen next year. Somewhere down the road. If that's the case, then we help you take a look at other, other methods of raising revenues to operate the city without necessarily raising taxes first. If that's insufficient, then we look at work with taxing, new tax structure might be beneficial for you to, one that would be acceptable to the community, I should say, for you to be able to move forward. So in a nutshell, that's what we do. We provide that kind of guidance and counseling for our clients to help them better operate and run their governments. At the end of the day, we work with you to be able to explain that to your community so that they don't, they see, basically the term is transparency. They see what you're doing, why you're doing it, how you're doing it. Because ultimately, if you do have to ask for another tax increase, you want them to know that you've gone through every measure that you can to, to make that request valid request and they can appreciate why you've asked for it. So.
That was less than you said.
Okay. So questions at this point?
I'm sure we'll pass some, but the presentation was very good.
Okay. There's a lot more data that I usually bring, but I figured you guys didn't want to be here till ten.
See where you have economic development.
Yes.
As one of the items. And it all focuses in on public finance. What's your philosophy as far as public versus private finance for economic development?
Well, my, my philosophy, you know, again, I'm a tool. So my, my job is to make your philosophy come to life. My philosophy is a taxpayer, it's pretty simple. And that is, I expect my government to do everything in its power to minimize my cost of living in that community while still giving me the services that I'd like. So, so if you can partner privately and do public-private partnerships to, to deliver certain things, then you should absolutely explore that. Now, by the way, that's one of the things that we do. We help you develop arrangements with, with private parties to, to spur economic development. And there's, today, there are more tools than ever for governments to partner with the private sector to do various things. But that's one of the things that we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
On that second page, which shows who does like the typical testing and modeling, which I believe we've been talking about here, so.
Yeah, so if you're, you know, again, our services are really comprehensive, seeing and just about everything. Prairie Township, you know, the rec center that they're building over there, we work with them on the creation of the Gen Z and then, you know, the financing for the project. So there's, we have a lot of information and resources that can help you. We come in most handy with communities that are curious, you know, that have, that aren't afraid to say, "I'd like to look into this." You know, for folks that know everything, I'm useless to them. But for folks who could use the help, you really do a lot.
Couple more questions. Your president of the company, what's the size of your firm?
There's five of us total.
Okay.
My son, not included. The one that's over there texting when he's supposed to be.
Not yet.
So there's five of us total. We're the largest, it's all, beginning, we'll start with the fact that what I do is unique to begin with. We're the largest of the firms that are unique like we do. Most of them are just one or two people.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's five of us total.
Timing wise, what's your workload? Are you, is your workload in the next six to nine months such that you could pick up an additional client even if time was of a critical importance to that client?
Yes. So my workload was, will be very busy until the second week of December. And then after the second week of December is by, then we're back to, we kind of reset every year. Currently, our workload is busy because interest rates dropped and people started refinancing bonds, just like you guys did. Very, very wise choice. And so we became very busy advising people about refinancing and now that's mostly out of the way. So we can dedicate quite a bit of time to you guys, you know, not just the next six months. Our relationships really kind of last for years, quite honestly, because once we get started, it's kind of like a family affair. We just kind of blend right in and become kind of, you know, addition to your staff. Because the questions that you have, it's interesting how it works. The more you learn, the, your, your questions begin to change, you know? And so you learn something in three months and you go, "Oh, wait a minute. What about this?" And then, so, so it's, our appointment is usually, we have a one-year contract, but most of my clients have been working with me for ten, fifteen years. So we'll kind of be around for a while.
I have a question, David. And you and I kind of talked briefly about this, but asking the questions, I mean, the impetus for me ultimately contacting you was the current budget issue that we have, I want to say issue, but we were, we just went through, just as you walked in the door, the second reading of 2015 budget. That budget contemplates raises and what I consider substantial increases in our outlay. Do you have any opinion as to, I mean, my opinion was to, to this organization, to this committee was to kind of put everything on hold. You and I haven't talked about that, but that's kind of what I thought we should do. Do you have an opinion on that?
Well, it's kind of hard not knowing more than.
Yeah, obviously, there's a lot of odds and whatnot, but.
The, you know, the hold in terms of the budget process and, you know, what's, well, generally, when do you try to have your budgets figured out and done?
Before the end of the year, which, you know, obviously, this isn't good timing, but.
We're closing right over the end of the year. You know, the.
We had a financial planning schedule established and tonight was to close out the preliminary budget for 2015. We've delayed that by two weeks. So tonight was just the second reading. They're still a third reading.
Okay. So during that, the process of delay, was there additional work that was done so that you, is this clarity that you guys are trying to get or is there, because there's, kind of the process, the way we work about, kind of work through it is first, if we're, if you're asking us to advise you about working, you know, redesigning the approach to the budget, the first thing is basically kind of establishing goals and, you know, how you, how you want the place to operate in a year, two years, or three years. Do you, let me ask some basic questions. Do you guys have a cash balance reserve policy or a target that, that you are shooting for? Is that something that you're currently at or above? Or where do you stand there?
We're within the target range at this point.
Okay.
Going into 2015 and also ending 2015.
Do you do a budget or look at a forecast that goes out beyond a year?
No.
Okay. So I would start with looking at where you might be a year, you know, two to three years down the road and then measure where you are on a basis, on your, your targeted cash amount. And if the number is significantly away from where you want it to be, backing up to where we are today, are there things that you're doing in the budget that could have an impact on where you will be two to three years from now? And then addressing, addressing that is more of a philosophical point at, you know, where you are. Now, it's kind of hard for me to come right in at this moment and say, don't, you know, keep deferring because it takes a little time to do that. But knowing where you are from an financial perspective right now, I don't see you being in a, in a really bad situation right now, although I didn't see this year's numbers. So I don't, I don't know how we did this year. Do we deficit spend or?
This year?
Yeah. Okay. So you're probably fairly close to where you were in thirteen?
Correct.
Okay. So if you are, then just my, my basic review, I'm working for you right now, is that I don't think you're going to run the place into the ground in a year. So let me, let me, let me put it down. So wipe your forehead, I think you're okay.
There's your headline.
And if you proceed, you know, unless there's something I'm missing, I don't imagine that there's something big in the budget. And we'll give you a year at least to put some of these concepts into place and you can take your time and look at a more, sort of a revised approach to the budget next year. And, and not only make it a one-year budget, but something that might be, you know, a three to five-year window that you guys can look at more collectively and, and do that. So that's just.
Yeah, I understand.
How I might approach it right now. But there are clearly some things that, you know, when I go through the numbers that are, they're not red flags, but they're little yellow flags and I go, "Look at me."
So do you spend any time then with Renee and Jesus and Kevin?
Right, yeah. With anyone, you know, maybe with anyone that needs money and with the person who holds the checkbook. Because, you know, because the process is, we need money, we need money. And she says, "Sorry, can't have it." Right? Pretty much. She had the big no button under her head. Go away. So, so my job is to understand what they need, help her understand what she has, or make it, refine it even more. And your, your financials are not super complicated. I mean, it's, it's stuff that's pretty plain and straightforward. And then help bring the two together. I mean, you know. I mean, you know, it's, it's not reasonable constantly saying no, you know, no, 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 no. But it's also very difficult to say yes when your resources are limited. So then you have to prioritize, what do we say yes to? Should we give a smaller raise to dedicate the difference to someone else that has a higher priority for their, for their funding? So we can help you kind of create that balance that has to exist. Because unfortunately, you can't wave a magic wand and have a $20 million budget and say, here, go do spend. So it's, you know, it's a process that you, you know, so we would, we'd work with everyone, quite honestly, to understand what the needs are. Anything else?
Just so, I mean, you and I have talked about it, what ultimately would cost us. Because at the end of the day, we're going to have to talk about it amongst ourselves to determine this is, you know, something that we, we can use and that there's value in it for us.
Right. And I told Mr. Kenny, our fee is usually $90,000 a year, but I've looked at your budget. You can't afford that. And I would, we can have a lower, I could do a $25,000 a year assignment. I have two younger people that I work with that you will likely see a little more than you would see me. But they're, they're going to be as good as I am, because I'm constantly telling them what to do. But we, but you'll see me quite a bit for the, for the lower, for the lower fee. And, you know, we, Wes and I used to do gymnastics up the street in the west, so we know the neighborhood. Wes and I here, and I used to live not too far from here in Dublin. So, you know, we're, we moved down to Lancaster, but right now, you know, it's still not too bad. So we can, we can work for that price range and, you know, and it's, it's not a, it's a unlimited. So you get me in the company as much as you need us. So there's not six hours a month or, or something like that. Because what we do and what you need can't be done by a set number of hours. It's just a matter of what you need and when you need it. But you'll find we're pretty hands-on, we like to come out, sit down with people, understand what they need and try to make it, make it a reality for you. Thank you for your time tonight. My pleasure. I have one extra copy, anyone want?
I'll take it.
It may, it may have some, uh-oh. Young lady said she wanted arm wrestling.
That's for school, so you can have it.
Very good. Anyone else out here with questions before?
Do you need to get your copy in?
Thank you for letting me interview you guys tonight.
Thank you.
So the, a discussion amongst ourselves on that issue or anything before we move on to other agenda items?
Well, you know how I feel, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. I think it's great to have fresh eyes looking at things. Thank you.
Especially when he's going to talk about TIPS and VAPs and all that. I think any one of us are experts in that, so.
But he could provide analysis of forecasting and modeling to help too.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that it would be a good direction without.
I think I'm really excited about the communication task back, getting, figuring out our brand out there a little bit better. And we do, we can do well.
But he did suggest we don't look for anything in November, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and the price point seems pretty reasonable, but I guess it would be probably good to look for someone else to come in and see.
Did you have somebody else coming?
Uh, no, the other, the other folks, the NOVAC, they have not returned my phone calls.
Okay, I'm, okay, I was getting mixed up.
No, you didn't have it mixed up. I, I had it mixed up when I reported it last time, that was my fault. I'm going to take the next couple of days and try to reach out to them again and just to, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt that it was just a mistake or some kind of communication issue. And go from there and let you know what I get. But there, you know, my internet research did not indicate, there's a lot of, there, there aren't many companies that do this. I found just the two in Ohio.
Yeah. Question for Paul. The $25,000, would that force us to go competitive bidding on this for service?
No. $50,000 in the vote. And I, and I just brought it up about Prairie Township and the rec center. They are doing a really nice rec center there that they've developed. And I know the administrator and council, the township trustees down there and their legal counsel. I can touch base with them and see what their thoughts are.
Great.
See what they're experiencing.
Okay, we'll, we'll chew on that for a little bit. Yeah, I'm glad that, thanks Nick for doing that. That's good, that's good stuff. All right. Next item on the agenda tonight would be the salary resolutions. And just to, just to get the discussions going, maybe if you'd like to have the mayor here for this, we could wait. But of course, that would be, these would be have to be passed as emergencies later.
I think we'll all wait on there. I agree.
I'd also like to share some information with the council, particularly the department heads. Do you recall, I did, we projected year-end revenues based upon annualizing the August year-to-date figures. I've checked this several times, and it's not tracking identical to what we thought. Chances are that you'll be asked to pull back on some of your budgets, whether it's personnel or whether it's other items, to bring it into balance between the time we pass the preliminary budget and the time we pass the final. Because we'll have the final revenues that we could work with as of December 31st. These are still projections, but it's, some of the items that I expected to track in a linear manner have not tracked that way. Don't know why. And Renee and I have touched base a couple of times. There's some that actually increased, some of the items in the allocation fund have increased, others haven't. But income tax really hasn't tracked as fast as I thought it would. So, and I also took a look at what he had projected here for 2014 in his analysis. So what he had projected is probably a little closer to where I think we might end up than when I analyzed the August year-to-date figures and tried to estimate them forward for budgeting purposes. So I just want to share that with the department heads because at this point, we said we were going to go forward with the preliminary budget, knowing that there would be changes made before the final. And I want you to understand, the likelihood of changes on your percentage allocation fund, it's pretty likely. It could be as much as 40% lower from what you had been allocated. An example would be, I think, one of the.
Four of them for 40%.
One of the departments had a $50,000 allocation, it may only be $25,000. So it's not 50% of your budget or anything like, like that. It's just, I, I felt obligated to share this with you before we get into any type of salary resolutions because this, as we said, it's up to you to manage your budgets, and this will be one of your first challenges potentially.
And if you do recall, when I proposed my initial budget, it was not using the projected numbers. That came later after those numbers were provided.
Well, this is information that I provided as forecast, along with the rationale for the forecast, and I'm seeing it tracked different than what I had anticipated, and I'm obligated to share that with everybody.
Okay. So that being said, well, the general consensus is to hold off on these resolutions until America be here and we can have a little more data in the next couple of weeks, I guess. Hash that out a little bit. You guys okay with that? Wait until she's here and we'll just.
Redraft those versions.
Yeah, so we're all okay with that, right? It would have to wait for three readings and if that's something that you're up for. Anything else tonight?
Was NOVAC the financial advisor for Dublin?
Yeah, they, they own Dublin.
Okay, so, I'd be interested if you could make contact with that too.
I will, I will try again, yes.
Although this gentleman was impressive this evening.
And I would, small correction, they're more organizational consulting for Dublin rather than the financial aspect of it.
There are NOVAC? Oh, well, you already spoke, so I'll go again. Anything else? Anybody from this side of the arch?
Hey, not to delay this any further, but is there an update we can get on the litigation issue? You weren't here last time to talk about it, Paul, I brought it up then, but if you want to quickly go into.
Same status that it was last time. We haven't had any significant change. There's still discussions going on between us and the other council and with our only council. I can, my suspicion is that there will be something reported for next meeting.
Okay, great.
Anything else from this side of the arch? Thank you. All right, we'll see you here in a couple of weeks.